Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to our last meeting in the air. So. Call the meeting to order at seven twelve. Good timing. And we just need to adopt the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second. A second. Any changes to the agenda? All in favor? And how about the November two minutes? A motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
That's moved. Are you seconding? And any comments on them, changes, corrections, minutes?
Again, very nice.
Scott, you're so reliable. Okay, there's no changes. All in favor and approving the minutes? Okay, moving on to the planning calendar. So almost right here for this year. So, main thing is tonight we need to approve the budget. Today was the blood drive, and then we're gonna start planning for the 2024 stuff. In January, we do things like reserving Fire Hall for events and hosting our meeting notices, setting our new meeting date, all that kind of stuff. So that's what we have. That's what we have to look forward to do in January. Also, Upper Hudson published their four trustee training dates. So those are February eighth, June fifth, seventh, December tenth. So those are available. They also got published, you know, it's for library leadership. In person events, Kim and I have to talk about that. It's a director, president. They both have to go. Training. Yeah, we went last year. It was, it was good, so.
Would you mind repeating the date? I'm sorry.
Sure, it's in the calendar.
Oh, it is.
You have to. As a trustee, do you have to attend that training annually or just once?
No, just once. Yeah, but there is now required two hours of trustee training per year, but it can be different topics. So last year, we brought Upper Hudson here to do two sessions for us. So, well, we should probably, maybe in January, we should look at that as well. I don't know if the if having them to come out to talk about the four fourteen essay training. If it is, that's probably what it's gonna be. But we can talk about that in January, probably. And we track, track what people did. And Kim has to report that in the United States reporting.
Yeah, but I just have to write down the number of course. I don't have to actually put in any details. I have to put details in. Well, we just have all that rain.
You have to disconnect. I feel like they have a slow period in the evening, you know, it's like it starts to slow down.
Stream is, the raise at home is hitting it up in streaming.
Consolidated.
Yeah, that's, they, they go up and they down.
No spectrum here.
Really? There's no fiber optic here?
They have consolidated has fiber optic, but we don't, we can't get cable.
Yeah, it's good. They had my cable.
No, there's something that happened to the town board. I think that they skipped us for some reason. I don't know why. What are the reasons for?
Lucky we signed up by what happened. They upped it to our house. We were lucky.
Away we go. Moving on to directions for Kim.
It's been a very, very, very busy month. Had a lot of programs. You see all of the different programs. And I just realized that I didn't change my September after all the programs. That should say November, December. Things have been super busy. Some of the more, the highlights would be the visit and pictures with Santa. We had twenty seven kids, one teenager, and then twenty seven adults, and that was
a lot.
It was a lot.
More than last, it seemed like it's one last year.
It was more than last year, and we actually had slow times. So we're gonna revamp how we do it, and I already have Jared and Bethany saying they'll do it next year, no problem. That's right. They're very happy to do it. And the fact that everybody gets their free pictures was just, a lot of people were extremely grateful for that. They didn't really, I guess, they thought they had to pay for it.
Do you know how much it is at the mall?
No.
It's probably, it's gotta be like forty dollars.
Thirty dollars?
The cheapest thing you can do, if you just want them to email the file to you, is like twenty four ninety nine.
Yeah.
But if you want a picture, yeah, thirty nine.
Well, we send them the files, and they, everybody gets at least three or four, because she sends, she sends whatever the best ones.
So. I couldn't believe how expensive. And then if there's more than one kid, they like add, they cry. It's like, freaking picture.
Yeah.
I just screaming to her. I did meet the mall or something, I don't remember what it was, and I was walking by. And, and I just looked at the sign, and then I like stood there with my mom paying.
We had a very, I wish that we had more people at the Celtic Music. I don't know why. I, just timing, maybe, that there were twelve adults. We did do gingerbread house making again, and that was good. This year, we split it into two rooms, which was much better than shoving everybody in here, but we had eighteen kids, three teenagers, and fifteen adults. So that was a good, good number. And story time numbers are still going strong. Yesterday was sixteen kids. Yeah, sixteen, sixteen altogether. So it's
Cheryl was telling me that she's starting to split out the older kids and focus on prepping for school and stuff.
Yeah, she's learning more preschools and things, so. She's already, we've ordered paper for them to write their names, you know, just kind of little things that they can do, so. She, I think she only had two kids yesterday, who were preschool age, but it's still a great.
Is the group that's sponsoring the breastfeeding cafe, are they okay with the numbers we're getting, or are they?
They didn't show up this week. And nobody showed up as, I don't know, I have no idea what happened. So I just realized it's two o'clock, and they never showed up. So I don't know what happened with that. So I'm gonna have to touch base with them and find out if we're gonna continue it or not. I think it would be great if we did, because I know we had at least two moms. The last one, and, you know, just hoping to try and keep it going. I'm not sure.
So the mothers came and the
No, no one showed up. No one showed up. So I don't know if they knew that no one was gonna be here, or
Yeah, maybe they were all in touch.
Yeah, something.
But how, they don't know if someone was gonna show up.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure. And we had ornament making. That was awesome. Lots of fun. The kids, we all enjoyed that. Adults came to just be away from their children, which was nice. I mean, parents brought their kids, and we, so it was good. Community room. This use, it got a little bit more use this month, because we got yoga, and then Jen used it for the E N C breakfast. And then the knitting group came back on the fifteenth, which was actually quite lovely, because they're a lovely group, and they come in. So they're trying to decide whether or not they're gonna continue coming here, but they have been meeting in Lebanon, so they're thinking about doing every other, like switching and going back. We'll see. Circulation's down a little bit, just generally, that's what happens during this kind of year. It's not huge or anything. And then same thing with the visits, but that's also not huge. We do have more, we have been getting more patrons signing up. We have new, more new patrons. I know I've personally done a lot of view. Staff have done so much, so it's good.
Question, is there any way to, to show that you, it's helpful to see things in contacts? And it's that, so is there any way that you can show the numbers against the previous year?
Absolutely.
Because I have nothing to compare it to, unless I go back. Which I could do, that would help everybody.
I think that I used to do it, and then started to get too busy, but I will.
Especially like maybe just in December, because it's the end of the year, so to compare the two years. Maybe do it quarterly.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely do that.
It's just another, I think really what I'm more interested in is the total visits and the registered patrons. Although I just read this, and I don't really understand that we have one thousand thirty nine patrons with expired cards.
So that means that their cards are no longer active. They still have a card, but it could have expired two years ago, and they just haven't renewed it yet. So that means that all those people are out there, and they're just not using their cards. So
So they're not using a lot of them?
Well, not necessarily. They could be coming to programming and different, and using a lot of computers or whatnot. They're just not checking books out. Or checking DVDs or movies, or they're not So I have been doing some outreach to try and get some of those people with expired cards to come back.
You got a pretty good response, right?
They did, yeah. So I'm gonna try again at the beginning of the year. So I'm just saying, we miss you, come back, that kind of thing. A lot of them too are, you know, like children, if you have child.
I was wondering that too.
Yeah. So it's not as diverse.
How since, if they haven't used their card for two years, it is, like, how does it? When do they become expired?
It expires three years after they register. So if you register today, in twenty six, your card will expire. Even if you're using, even if you're using.
Were expired now are people that came during COVID, or started using stuff more during, you know, like, so there's probably people who, who, you know, like, they were home.
Right.
And now they're not.
Yeah, sure.
Or up here, and now they're back.
So it might be something, like, if you do that post about the streaming services, and now we have DVDs to remind people.
To your card. Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
That's why people love them now. You know what the big thing is? Cassettes.
Yes, yes. We, we had no success at the Pittsfield sale with cassettes. We had about a hundred, none of them sold.
You might not have had the right audience.
We had, they're all rock and roll, they were all, you know.
No, the audience for that, not.
Oh, no, we get, we get, you know, a thousand people over there. That's a huge. But I mean, I've heard. I've heard, I've heard cassettes are hot, but LPs are hot.
Well, that's been for a while.
Yeah.
It's been back for a while.
I think it's all pretty relative, though. Louise might say.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, you could call it hot, yeah.
Let's see, so just happened here that we were closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. We met with the brand committee, marketing committee. I tried to have a staff meeting on December eleventh, but we all had to work either recovering from surgery or going to doctor's appointments, so. They had surgery, Cheryl had surgery, or showed you with the doctor's appointment, and it was just like, okay. Let's see, I've been working on the website. We do have a button on the top of the website right now that says to add for the annual appeal. I still need to get a picture of you and a picture of Karen and something, a short, very, oh, I got that. Yeah, I just need to get the picture. I did attend a D A meeting in Albany at the, at Upper Hudson. It looks like we might, it's, it's possible that we're gonna get full funding for the grant, for construction grants. There's, there's, people dropped out, and so it's, it's looking more promising.
Full funding mean, full?
Seventy five percent.
When will we know?
I don't know. Scott, do you know when we know?
No, I don't.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't.
They might. We did find out that Rodden, who is our tech guru, who is like the person who knows everything about everybody's library technology. He will be retiring in March, so that's kind of concerning for all of us, because no one knows as much as he does in terms of what he's done so far to all of the computers and everything.
He was the guy when I was in.
He's been there for thirty five years.
Without to say, he was there for going into new systems and everybody going online, all that. He's been there for all of that.
We don't have any outstanding changes that we are planning, right? Whether any, any of our equipment or any.
Everything's right now status quo. They did approve their budget. They had to do some balancing of their budget, and they're gonna be changing staffing hours, so it's not gonna be, they're gonna be eight thirty to four thirty. I think they're gonna be changing to balance things out, but the one thing is that they didn't change anything to delivery services or the lawn. It doesn't really impact us. I did ask Kirk to go ahead and replace that door. He sent me a, just a printout of what he was gonna get, and it looks exactly the same, so. But I haven't heard from him yet. I'm, I'm waiting till holidays, so we'll go from there. Did a budget meeting. Louise has moved to Florida for the winter, so she's not gonna be doing social media for us anymore. So it's gonna be me, Jen, and Tefra. You're gonna help with just writing things up, right?
I think I should work with you on that. But I asked my ideas about some help we might be able to get, so we can talk about it.
Sounds good.
Now, when Louise comes back?
No, I don't think so. Oh, really? I don't think so. But I haven't talked to her. She just sent me a text and an email that said she was done. So the programming, the other, the other fun thing, so I wrote in here about the, you know, thanking to Bethany Manning and Jared Raisi for donating their time for Santa pictures. The other thing that we did with the teens this time was we were incorporating some community service into their, into the teen night. So the teens made hot chocolate packets, which we called Santa, or Snowman Soup. And they were given out with the Christmas food baskets for the food pantry.
You did a really beautiful job on them. I mean, they're really nice, professional. There was a lot of them, and thank you for doing the second batch. Thank you on behalf of the pantry for doing that.
It was, we were happy to do it, and the kids were happy to do it too. You know, when we told them, this is gonna go to the food pantry, and it's gonna, they were just like, ah, all right, let's go. And they didn't complain, they didn't say, I don't wanna do this, they just full force, and it took them like ten or fifteen minutes to put all the bags together. So it was, it was nice, and they, they did seem like they were enjoying it, so that was good. Let's see, bookkeeping was, to end, going to Capcom with Richard and Jen was a lot of my month this month. Then we'll update everybody on all of that. Town board meeting went on too. I did let them know that all the paperwork for camp has been submitted. And we need to find another place to hold camp. And so PJ has Diane, I think Diane is going to, to contact the fire department, and we're gonna contact the school, and, but it's on, it's in their radar, and it's on their plate right now in terms of where we're gonna have this, so. Is it, you just cannot use our bag if it doesn't get fixed, so.
I think it was probably slightly good timing that the town board meeting on Monday was, once again, the rains flooded. It's a good reminder that like
Yeah, it was, it needs to be done, exactly. We did discuss the Fire Hall, and we discussed using the field. And I did call Steve Goodermode to look at the backyard and see if he had any ideas. I haven't heard back from him. I'll touch with him after Christmas is over and everything. And then the last thing was, is that just I was out from December sixth to about the eleventh with surgery, and, but have made up all of that extra time. And the pictures that you see, I like. We literally had the two kids get there, get all set up, and then it was like, we counted down, one, two, three, give the baby, take the picture. It was great. It was so much fun. And it's, it was very classic. That's why I was like, let's
Do you, if you have pictures from the teens doing that event, to do for Facebook, because then, I, I was really, we've been really bad on the food pantry, taking pictures of the food pantry this year. We could also, I would share it that way too, and thank, thank.
We were gonna do, yeah, we were gonna do a post, I have pictures of the kids doing it without the faces, just, but just hands, you know.
Awesome.
Showing that, yes, they're wearing gloves. During all of this. But yeah, I'll do that, and then That was my next story. That's what I was gonna do as well. That's my, I just, I don't know what these, because usually there are things they do on Monday, but I don't know how they're doing things for Christmas and New Year's. These are both Mondays, so I'll have to find out. So. And I think that's it. For now.
All right. Any questions, Kim? So, Richard. Your, would you like to give?
I'm okay with this. This is fine. I'll, I'll be happy to proceed. Okay, so you have two pieces of progress. You have the as of December, and it was as of yesterday. Is that is the most up to date profit and loss through December twenty twenty three. So on that, on the last, the net income shows ten thousand on one side and eight forty. It was our budget, so we still have money in the bank, I'm pleased to say.
We're extra pleased to say for half the summer.
Don't steal any fire. So I will point out something that looks a little weird. If you look at forty one ninety on the first page. It's right below the ninety nine thousand. It's ten thousand four thirty three forty one, miscellaneous income.
Sorry.
Now, that is money that was refunded to us after our account got hacked. We had two, two different events. One at the end of November, someone pulled out seven thousand dollars via the routing on the debit.
Like an electronic, electronic.
Electronic withdrawal. We caught it pretty, we caught it pretty quickly. Jen went over to the sheriff's office. We reported it back to the Capcom people, and they refunded that money within a day. Then we discovered on further review that a check in the early part of November, I believe it was November the tenth, had been written on the account that we knew nothing about. And once again, we reported it to the sheriff's department, and this was a check in the amount of about twenty four, twenty five hundred dollars. It appears that somebody got into our outgoing mail. Took a picture of the check. So I had to check, change a lot of the numbers, and then for the mobile deposit. And that is the sheriff's, that is the sheriff's best guess of what happened.
So
They took the check out.
Departed in somewhere. We know where it got departed.
Yeah, in Arkansas. At a bank in Arkansas.
So they should be able to track that.
Oh, no, they did. They tracked it down, and they gave us that money back too.
So they've given that back to us. It's gone to Capcom's investigations department, and it's also gone to the sheriff's department investigations department. So it's gonna go to the higher, I think it goes to the higher division than the sheriff's, because it's a fraud, a bank fraud.
And it's assumed that it's the same perpetrator and
We don't know.
We're pretty sure it's not, because one of them was totally different. It was, a guy kind of went in and said he's gonna do the, do the twenty three cents and then seven cents, and then backed it out.
Yeah.
Just to test it, and then within two days, he pulled out several thousand dollars. So we caught it, we caught it pretty quickly.
We didn't lose anything.
We, no, that's the The good news is Capcom obviously has insurance that covers this. Because the sheriff's department was rather shocked in both instances that we got refunds. But you're talking ten thousand dollars total, basically.
Well, the great thing is too, is that if, if it goes over ten thousand dollars, it's a federal crime. And it was ninety five hundred dollars, so. So it's a very experienced person also.
It does seem like they had very, like, just the way they did it, and saying, maybe not trigger certain security things you might have, things like that.
I wonder if the credit union handles things differently.
They seem to.
More favorably to the consumer than
Well, I think the credit union has a different way of, their structure is different, obviously. They don't have, you know, shareholders in such a speed. So I think they probably have something set up that's a little bit more lenient towards their customers. But I don't know how we're gonna avoid the check one. That's the one that scares.
Well, we're not gonna put checks. I'm not putting checks in the mailbox anymore.
Okay, I'm actually just go directly.
Right over to the post office. That's, that was the one thing the sheriff said. He's like, he recommends it to everybody. Don't put mail in your mailbox, but, because if you've got mail going out, and there's a red flag up, that usually means there's a check in the mail. Except for this time of year, when it's, you know, Christmas cards and whatnot, but so that's not how, I just mailed a couple of checks, and then just put them straight into the move offs, and that's where they'll go from now on.
Put some new security notifications for certain, certain amounts of withdrawals and things.
Right. I have a, with, if a withdrawal over five hundred dollars been made, I should get an email set up. We also changed our bank account numbers, so we have to get, we've gotta get new, we're waiting on the new checks to arrive. I've changed everything over with ADP and all the other withdrawal things that we had, whether checking account, all that stuff has been done. And then there was, we also got a new credit card. We're waiting for, so the old credit card has been canceled, and we're waiting for the new one to arrive. So I really can't buy too much right now. Unless I put it on my own account, and, you know, re, get reimbursed. So for now, we're just kind of, it's the end of the year, it was perfect, actually, because most of everything has been done, so we don't need a lot more. So it's
That was quite considerative.
They timed us nicely. We were at the bank for about three hours on Friday, and they were extremely helpful. Answered all our questions. There were some other, you know, since that we had taken care of it, and Derek got that done. So I mean, we're just really lucky that we've got a bank that's, you know, that's willing to do that. I know, I know, I could get nearly that good service from worshiping. I would be surprised.
The credit union, they're great.
Great, great luck. Yeah, I mean, this, this is Capcom, and they're just
Right, I'd say credit unions are
Yeah, they're a little more user, they're a little more user friendly as a rule, you know, but it was, it's just made us, and I'm glad Kim has put the five hundred dollar emergency account. They were just, you know, not a whole lot that we could have done. I mean, we could, mine could have caught the twenty three cents. We kind of looked at it a stance and said, well, I guess it's okay. And, because Kim did ask me about it, and
But that's always what that is. So it's little amounts like that is always
Yeah, we probably should have, but I mean, I don't know if we had challenged that, if then the next one would have been blocked or not, but they did say, when we challenge the seven thousand, that anything that comes from that source will be totally declined. So they can't do it again from that source. Now, as far as the checks, we put them directly to the post office, that hopefully will take care of that, but and we did change all the account numbers and all that, so. And we get, get the new checks coming in next week sometime.
Yeah, and I paid for the rush shipping, and there's the rush point orders. We need to have those. We only have three now, so if somebody
So if you're wondering where we backed that out, you'll look at the miscellaneous expense, fifty one thirty, also towards the bottom of the first page, and that was that is those three items, plus there was another miscellaneous, I think it was a book that was lost or something, the ninety five, twenty seven, thirty seven, so. And the miscellaneous income we had before, we already had something in there that we hadn't had a home for, so that's why the numbers don't quite match. The one thing it does skew though, is it does skew the income. We don't have income of one hundred and fifty four thousand. We really have the income of one hundred and forty four thousand. That's what you have to kind of look at. We don't have income of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, we really have the income of a hundred and forty-four thousand, that's what you have to kind of look at. So that, that, that is a false reading. But we couldn't think of any other really way to do it.
Because we've got money coming back.
Yeah, I mean, it zeros itself out.
It's zero, it zeros out, but as far as your records, it shows that you have ten thousand dollars more. So I mean, that's, you know, and I don't know if the, how that's going to affect, if they're gonna review the books for the four fourteen, I have no idea.
Well, I don't, I don't think. Like anyone particularly reviews it, I mean, anybody can always look at our public documents, but it's not.
Okay, I just, I just didn't know if they were kind of looking at scans at like a miscellaneous income like.
I think it's probably, if we had a way to, um, you know, make a note of something like a comment on a, on a box where we have something unusual like that. It might wouldn't hurt, just so also moving forward when we go, we go, if we ourselves go back and look and say, what, why did that happen?
Yeah, yeah.
But thank you, Richard and Kim for working on this and, and I know it was a lot of hours, a, an annoying thing to switch on all those accounts and not mention.
And the good news is, you'll notice the annual appeal to twenty twenty-three is already close to eight thousand dollars.
We're actually above it.
I kind of figured there might be some more coming in.
Uh, we're now at eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-six pounds and seven cents. That is the most up to date that we have, including checks that came in today.
Eight thousand nine hundred, sorry.
Eight thousand nine hundred eighty-six and seven cents, if you want to do that.
Seven cents?
Well, square, when you have the fees, so Pete, what's actually been donated to us is nine thousand and twenty dollars.
Oh, I see, I see, that added fees I got to you, cause that's the card. That's, that's pretty good considering we only got this out, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm only on a halfway there. And I noticed that, um, quite a few of the ones from Square came in, so actually it's. Two, three, four, five, six, seven donations from Square came in after the post was put out, so.
I think it also was email went out too.
And we have another email scheduled as well, right? And I think those posts will. Did you see my email connecting directly to the letter and not?
Yes, no, I did see that, I didn't see that, um.
So I haven't seen emails yet today, so I didn't, oh, so if there's something to change, I can change it.
Other than that, just general, you know, overview is our repair maintenance is on the second page is a little less than what we budgeted. Remember, the budget is the blue number to the right, the actual is the number to the left.
We're not getting that door in this year though, so that's.
So that'll be, that'll be on next year's repairs, um. Other than that, uh. We actually. Still have money in the bank, ten thousand dollars, so it's pretty good. How much, it can't even have any estimate, but I'd be going out for the next week or.
Not much.
Not much.
No checks, no credit cards.
We're just, we're just kind of making up as we go along, January will just kind of weird.
I think, uh, we had. Let's see. Sixty, a hundred bucks going out, that, oh, maybe two hundred bucks going out, it was on.
All the, all the fuel oil's been paid for, all the, all the utilities are paid for.
Actually, uh, yes, yeah, everything's been paid for so far, so we're, we're up to date. Um, and we actually just paid, um, insurance, so I just paid the. Most of the insurance, I think is confusing.
From what I can tell, it looks like the insurance was totally up to date.
So I think it's just that one maintenance clause of the door which we thought.
Probably gonna be about a thousand dollars, we made one. Alright, so, and on the second page, the second you've got is all the amount of money in the bank, um. That's how much is available as of this afternoon. Or I guess it was last night, I'm sorry. And we did take six thousand dollars from the operating income and put it into the special project savings account, that's why that's fifty-six thousand dollars instead of fifty thousand. We did go ahead and take that and put that in.
And just so you know, all of the money that's, the annual appeals going into the checking account, so I don't know if you're gonna wanna change, like, take that money out of the checking and put it into the savings, just.
Well, I might wanna talk to Capcom and, and see if we could, you know, grab a six month CD because the rate should really be right now. Yeah, my church has already made about three hundred dollars in like a month, which is, you know.
That would be great if you would like to look into that, see if that's a.
Yeah, so one thing we forgot to ask the nice people at Capcom. So I think, I mean, that's, that's where we're at and, and so, and we're lucky that. We got the money back, but it just, it's just scary, it's just terrifying. Um, cause so much is done online and so much is done on the internet, that I've got. Super antivirus protection on my home computer and I'm sure we have it here. I have no idea how, cause Capcom's the one that's gonna act, I mean, really, what do you think about it?
They must have had, because they took the money out of our checking account, we don't have a debit card. Um, so we're not using, like, my paper stuff online is being paid for with either the checking account number or a credit card. So they had to access our checking account number somehow, and whether it was like just one person doing the whole thing with that one check. That they stole.
No, it could be somebody who worked at the power company for a month. And just took pictures of people's checks for a few weeks while they were there, back in August, and now they're starting to use them.
Yeah, that's what's going on all over the place apparently, just. I mean, it was very strange, they even forged Richard's signature, they, you know.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they had, they had a signature that was not that far off.
Yeah.
Now, my signature's pretty nasty, but.
But it was definitely.
But it had, it had literally. It was close. And then when you do a mobile deposit with a phone.
Yeah.
There's no, no real way to check it.
Yeah.
They just, they just grabbed it and off they went. But we're gonna be, uh, so now basically every other day I go into the account to see if there's anything weird going on. We had to change some passwords and whatnot, that created some fun.
I'm actually fine.
I'm sorry, I hadn't, I hadn't changed at all, it's kind of weird.
I don't know what happened with.
My change, I'm, I'm good, I'm.
You're good. Yeah.
So, that, that's what I've got for right now, we'll talk about the budget, uh, later on in the attempts.
Good, maybe we'll just transition, I'm not sure if it's old business to new business. And then group of, of money, let's talk about the budget and then, uh, we can go on to business.
Yeah, we do have the budget, uh, in front of you, the landscape, uh, spread out. Had to make some. Cut decisions, we had talked the last meeting about how nice it would be to, uh, have a program person. Uh, unfortunately, the people that met on the budget decided that we just really couldn't absolutely. Put the money in there right now. Program expense is pretty much just a little bit more than what it currently is. If that'd be a little bit less, it's fourteen thousand oh five oh, that does not include any salaries, is that correct? Am I right on that?
Yeah, the program.
Program, program budget. Now, did we, I can't remember, did we approve, uh, Rebecca?
Well, we approved a second story time.
Second story time person.
So we put that in and that is in the, where it says net pay programming staff. So it's number five, one, five, zero, two, two, under wages. That forty-eight hundred include is paying for program for story time, so two staff members for story time. Um, and that would be at the same rate, pay rate as what everyone else is getting paid, and so the fifteen, fifteen. So that's, and then I've, um, applied, I applied for a grant, um. I don't remember who it was. Rural libraries, applied for that grant and then I'm also going to apply for, um, Stuart's grant. And hopefully we can use those two monies to then have someone do programming for summer reading. And at least have a more robust summer reading program, um, if we can get someone to have that as a second. And we'll see where that goes from there, so fingers crossed and I'll look and see if there's other places where.
The rural library one, I think is only a thousand, that was, it's not a lot, but it's awesome, I don't know, it didn't seem all that, um. Uh, I don't know what student it's that they have.
Oh, they were, they were easy as well.
But I mean, are they, what kind of funding?
You ask, so I can ask. They don't really have a, um, a limit, but they probably asked for like two thousand or, and see if they get us that.
So we did, now, one thing we decided that in order to hopefully balance the budget, we had to raise. The, uh, fundraising budget. We decided that instead of. Five thousand dollars, we were going to put ten thousand six hundred dollars in. Donations, fundraising income. So, we, we thought that we could maybe have a special appeal in conjunction when we start the construction. Hopefully eight to twenty-five percent, uh, of the matching grant. Uh, that was a thought, um, we also, uh. I knew from a reason person is going to concentrate a little bit more on talking to grants, etc., is that correct?
I can do some research.
Yeah, how's that going?
There's some stuff out there.
Okay.
Depending on what we wanna do, um. This year is, uh. Um, they're saying that it's going to be the lowest annual fundraising years since two thousand twelve. And it's not looking so good for next year, next year's also complicated because it's an election year as well, and so. People spend a lot of dollars a little differently, um. So I'm not particular, you know.
Well, I, I mean, annual appeal is, is been a lot more than I thought it would, so quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that surprised me, I think a lot of it was, was extremely excellent.
We were certainly getting a lot of good feedback.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that there's a lot that. So you know, like, with this. Every year journey budget time, because everybody is always turned to me. Um, so, um. And I'm sure you're used to this too, from people, right, from fundraisers too, it's, it's so hard to predict what, what giving is going to look like. I think that there are things that we can do that will help for a visibility and. Support in Steven Towns, a few things, I mean, uh, some of the foundations that I went to. They're not doing. What they used to do anymore, so they've switched, you know, their, what this is a given. One thing, and maybe some, does somebody remember, was it Karen who said that she had access to, uh. Like the foundation center online thing?
Yeah, it's Karen.
Alright, I'll reach out to her, um, and.
I think things affect that the stock market just went crazy booming at the end of the year would be helpful.
Um, there's not a lot of trust right now in anything.
I know, but it's there.
Yeah.
And if you, if you don't trust and you think it's gonna disappear, well, I mean.
No, 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 there's, people's trust in not-for-profits, whatever they are. Um, has gone down significantly, the place where they wanted to put their money. Um, so, that's not good.
That's true though at a local level, whereas a local organization, it seems to be true across the board.
Right, people are, and people are hanging on, so, um. We'll, we'll see, we can't predict anything, I mean, the places, it's just really hard to retain donors, it's hard to get new donors. And this is how people grow, um, right, for their fundraising money.
Yeah.
And if you can't, if you can't do that, it's gonna make it more difficult, I think there are some people in this town though. That we can get, um.
We definitely have, uh, I haven't done a report yet, cause.
No, no, no.
Um, but just because of knowing people, um, I know we've gotten quite a few new people from the larger mailing. Um, and one new person that was significant.
Really?
Yeah, cool, so.
Yeah, so I, I think what we should do is have a, 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 some sort of committee meeting around fundraising. Um, and, and sort of create a plan for, um, and I think it should be, you know, connected with Sarah's. Group and it's about marketing, communication and fundraising are, are, they're all tied together. I mean, my job at not-for-profits has always been, you know, the chief development and communications person, right? So we can, and I know that there's a lot of stuff that's just about programming and.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just really library stuff, but even that, right? I, I mean.
Uh, I think maybe we can in January, I, I don't think we do our committees in January, we do them in April, right, because of the. And you know, they, you know, I'm not sure, I've been very lax about committees lately, um, but. I was gonna say, I think we can do what we want, so maybe in January we can reach, read, um. Decide on what, what committee makes sense, um, and who would like to be on them, how, how those will run and kind of refresh.
Do the thank yous to the more significant donors get tailored to them very specifically?
Everybody, everybody basically right now over twenty-five dollars, I'm writing a personal note on the. On the letter, so they're getting the standard letter with the person, you know, with, with the plugged in. Plugged in. Uh, their name, their amounts, their date.
Are you able to see if they're members too?
Yeah, I, I, well, it's not up to date yet, no.
Okay, cause that would be, that would be interesting, right, I mean.
And I have a bunch of data entry stuff to clean up that we have to do afterwards.
Talk about that too, because we should be able to.
No, we totally can, and we have most of them marked, but we can't, it's not a, it's a manual process to get the list of.
When you, when you write. A, a thank you, that is very specific to. Be like, as someone who has, when you're submitting it now, I wanna let you know the impact that you are having, kind of. Check on, even there, so really telling those thank yous for the bigger donors. I'm not asking for more money, but just really, you know, letting them know that we really recognize that they really.
Kind of goes the wrong way, which you did.
Yeah.
Jen, Jen is doing that. Yes. Now, 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 now.
Um, we had a really.
We have five more minutes in the budget, but.
Okay.
But we are running over.
Let's finish off the discussion, then we can go to quick, quick, quick update on the fundraising and then all the more. So, other, so we touched on the main things, which are.
Pretty much the main things, I mean, payroll's up, uh, you know, a, a little bit because we do have the program and then. We gave the staff some raises, but they're all well deserved, um. For the most part, our expenses across the board are, you know, just, we knew there was gonna be, you know, an increase in some facility repairs, etc., but. And I wanna thank everybody that met, uh, for the little budget mention. Uh, it was a very open, good discussion, a lot of. Good, good opinions and whatnot back and forth and. At the end of the day, we were able to come up with, uh, you know, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Well, is that our deficit? Four ninety-two?
I think the one thing to remember to talk though about too is that we didn't put any money in the reserves this year.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't, we decided not to take the six thousand dollars that we normally put into the reserves and we decided not to do that. I mean, that and the increase in fundraising income, that, that is how we were able to balance this. And we were hoping if, you know, we were able to get a little bit more money coming in, then maybe we could then also talk about, uh. Pro, a program director position, but we thought we'd have to get at least through the first quarter to see what it looked like before we made any of those kind of decisions.
So, discussion from the board, questions, questions?
Unfortunate that we can't get the program manager, but it sounds like.
It was, it was a pretty spirited discussion back and forth on that and.
Well, and it's not a definite no, it's just.
We're waiting to see.
Yeah, it's a point in time.
Yeah, Scott, that very good point about, he says, let's just wait and see how it looks and he said, maybe we can, mid-year, maybe we can adjust it. Nothing is said in absolute stealth. Nothing is set in absolute stone, that's the difference. Except for hopefully the money coming in from the town.
No, that is set in stone, there's. I don't have to button up to get the money, but.
So we are going to work on a four fourteen for next year of increase.
We'll start working on that to do it in twenty twenty-five.
All right, so that's that's what we reported before the town, and that would be a twenty percent increase.
No, we have to talk about, yeah, I mean, I think what we were looking at was that they were around an eighteen percent, but then I think was what Scott mentioned that we need to look. Project a little more towards the future and think about.
When was the last time that it was approved?
Oh, it's only got, only last twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
I think that's right, twenty eighteen sounds right, yeah.
So I think we can work on the strategy.
The mechanics. Doing.
Mostly that perhaps on the strategy on that, you know, start to come up with a plan.
If we've got no further questions, we need a motion to accept the budget as proposed.
I make a motion to accept the budget as proposed.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, everybody, for that special meeting, because that was really.
Okay, is there any new business? All right, no business. So fundraising mostly covered so far, um, uh, I think I just. Followed up on the holiday market here, which. And so. The holiday market, uh, did very. Sorry, been very well, thanks to some of our generous vendors, they donated their sales. So we had, um, two hundred and twenty dollars in vendor cables, forty dollars in our merchandise sales. A hundred dollar general donation from a shopper, and then over a thousand dollars donated, um, from vendors, so. Appreciate this. Scott, Jen, your mom, yeah. Um, and we did solicit some feedback overall. The vendors seemed very happy. Um, it was up and down if we did well, we did. Um, but but generally, people seemed very happy with it. Um, a couple of things that people sent us feedback was to maybe make it a little bit more festive next year. More like some more decorations, some things that make it look a little bit more like a holiday winter wonderland. Um, it's not my, it's not my, uh, forte, so maybe I can see if Vicky would be willing to get recruited into this. Um, and one vendor thought that marketing promotion was well done, um, and a few people mentioned later. Either extended or later hours, and I think that's going to be a a tough thing to figure out if vendors want to stay longer, if they want different, I mean, it's going to be tough, we can think about it, but. You know, for people who work, they want it to come after, they want to do everything.
Things we've done in the past was have cannoli rooms in and stuff like that, and that's. Probably something we should do, because not only is it make it more party-like, but it also brings all the parents. Coming in, it's like other things to do.
At the holiday, the Christmas holiday market before the pandemic, we had.
Yeah.
The school came in with their band and their singers. Santa was here. We had Joey set up a table to for kids to buy little gifts for their parents. We did cookie decorating, we did, um, so it wasn't just the market, it was like this huge festival type thing, so. Maybe next year, looking into doing that again, that definitely brought us a lot of people to.
Maybe we have a really hard in the space and we.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was very, yeah, it was.
It was like a flexible show thing, you know, maybe we can make some more space.
We can do some of that.
I think, I mean, not to be a wrench about it, but also the COVID thing, that there's something about a bunch of people singing in small sphinx. Yeah, I mean.
Very volatile.
And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like COVID's going away.
I did see one of the, um, was it, uh, uh, doesn't matter, uh, a nearby location. Um, they had an outdoor setup, which is pretty risky in December.
Yeah, really.
But they had big tents set up and lights looked very pretty, but, um, uh, and there was another one that did a whole outdoor, um. Complete outdoor.
But Lennox said there, the Christmas festival, it was outside.
Yeah.
And it was coldness.
Yeah.
It did not, it did not work.
We might think about it, it again, it's a risk, though, because you don't know what the weather's going to be, but extending it onto the deck, decorating deck with lights and.
And having harrowers there.
Yeah.
Have you seen my house? I'll be happy to decorate your deck. Sixty strands.
Are there, I mean, other vet, like, Zenies where we could do it, where it was bigger and.
Yeah, but then we kind of.
I mean, actually, I was just reading a paper, you know, I do. About, um, libraries partnering with other, because everybody, they small, or a library struggle with this. So they partner with. You know, a restaurant and, uh, say, we're gonna have this and the and the. The vent, the restaurant says, okay, and during this time, you'll get ten percent, we'll donate ten percent of whatever we sell.
Yeah.
Some food or whatever. So it's not like sort of thinking outside, talks about what kind of partnerships you could do, so.
True, yeah. Well, maybe too, I mean, if we if we work out this four fat foul brunch thing.
Yeah.
Then maybe there's something we can talk to them about other.
Other thing.
And it's still, it's also like being across the street is nice, because maybe they will have a.
The space, which is.
Right, they're they're itchy about letting the space be, as insurance reasons. I had asked if we could use a program. And.
But they had a wedding.
I know that the wedding was probably, that's that family too, wasn't it?
It could be expensive, it could be expensive.
But also.
I used to sell for fifteen hundred dollars a kilo.
Cooperation where they decide they want to do something holiday-ish, we do something here, right, and there's, it at least brings people.
Well, it's kind of what we tried to do with, you know, even though, uh, the celebrate Steven Town thing kind of stopped. If when they had their festivals, like, well, let's have our market the same day if we can, or if it's the same days, the the fire department stops.
Yeah. Right, but, well.
Yeah, we still need to.
Scott, you want to take over for me?
Sure, you get a superhero costume.
Oh, that sounds so good, sending.
He was using the word costume.
Oh, yeah. I'll come back later. Right.
Good luck.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Look at you, girl.
Merry Christmas.
Quick change.
You like the whole costume?
Fans got quite a.
Wow, wait.
So on to Brandon marketing?
Pardon?
On to Brandon marketing? Yeah, there's next up, yeah. Um, so the things that I have to report, um. As we talked about, uh, last time, there's three programs that are coming up. The the one that's coming up in January is the jam session series, the first of the jam session series. So I just need to nail down a date for that.
I'm really sorry, I've been doing it with Scott Connors.
Oh, cool, oh.
He had. We're gonna get together, he had COVID, and then we're gonna get together, and he had, um, some sort of really bad stomach flu. So, is it made? I'm beginning to wonder, um, but hopefully we'll be, he knows we need to decide.
Yeah, that's fine, just, I I didn't mean that you needed to tell me.
Yeah, yeah, that it's happening before you get together and not late the day out.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Still a possibility, it seems in my world, we can say, so, there you go.
Okay, so 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 we'll do that, and then we can start marketing it, um, and then later in, uh, Q one. We we talked about doing the farmer gardening tips one, the speaker series, and the elder care rules in the states, and so that's coming up. Now, as, um, Jen just alluded to, I reached out to Shalina about the potluck that we were planning to have in February. Because Shalina and Four Fat Fowl have been sort of canvassing people, um, in Steven Town about their interest in doing a potluck. And we like to have a six-month potluck in the middle of our new resident, um, events. And so I wondered if we could work together on that, and she was really enthusiastic about that. She liked the idea very much. Um, she proposed the date of February nineteenth, which I think works well for us. I don't think we want to do it too soon. Because we want to have time to to kind of. Work through what exactly is going to be, how to make it work, and she said that we could do it in the Four Fat Fowl gym. And I thought that maybe, um, we could do something like, uh. Invite people to Steven Town's Midwinter Cheer Potluck from Cheese to Chocolate. Um, and see, yeah, so that we'd have the Four Fat Fowl cheese theme in, and everybody likes chocolate, and it's got the C Hs everywhere, and, you know. Uh, and maybe ask people to bring potluck food that has either cheese or chocolate, so you have the desserts, you have the.
So February nineteenth, that's a Monday?
It's a, it's, um, the Sunday before President's Day, so it's holiday weekend, the Sunday.
That's the eighteenth then. I think she said the nineteenth.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
You wouldn't want to do that before Valentine.
Maybe I looked at the wrong year.
Let me see. It's possible I have the wrong date. But I'm pretty sure that's what you said to me.
So it would be, it would be President's Day, it would be Monday President's.
Uh, yeah, maybe that's it then, yeah, yeah. Does that sound like a problem or like good?
I'm not really able to do any, so. But yeah, I'll be working.
I don't think it would be a problem unless it's not, I mean, if it's during the day, we're, then all we get is certain people.
Yeah, I I mean, we really have to work out what we want it to be, if it's dinner, um. How, you know, how to promote it, um, how how to kind of brand it to the extent that we want it to be. The library's name to be involved with it, yeah.
Breakfast, a breakfast would be easy, easier sell. Brunch type.
Brunch.
Yeah, we've done brunches before, but the potluck was. Because.
With what you're saying, Monday night. Is that?
No, we're not saying anything, we're saying that's the day, and then and then we're gonna talk about what we recommend. Or we think would work with Shalina, and then see if she likes the idea, and and we'll work it out from there. And I also have to find out who else agreed that they wanted to do it, so it could be like a multi-organization thing. Or it could just be them and us, um. Well, I just have to see.
So there's a lot to figuring out first, so we have the date.
Yeah, and I guess if it's, um, if it's not at night, then the the chocolate thing isn't gonna, because you don't want to be eating chocolate in the morning. Yeah, brunchy could, yeah, okay, all right, crepes. So it sounds like everybody's more or less okay with the idea of doing a joint thing, that whole thing's worked out for us, um, and we'll. I'll I'll speak with her about, if anybody has any ideas aside from making a brunch, which is cool, I'll I'll suggest that, and and the little. Um, mid-winter cheer potluck brunch, from cheese to chocolate, um, and we'll go from there. Okay, cool. Um. So do you want to talk about it happened at the library?
No, I'm just, I, um, yeah, I can do that for a sec. I just always think like, gosh, alliteration, I love it so much, um. Uh, I'm gonna be working with Kim on a campaign called It Happens at the Library. Um, and helps to bring more people into, um, you know, our posts tend to be about. Events, um, and what really, what I know is that. Um, the posts that get more engagement from a not-for-profit are posts about people, really. Um, and, uh, um, so came up with this idea called It Happened at the Library. I took an email that, um. Kim wrote to us, and I'll just read it to you, it's only a few sentences, if you live in Steven Town, you should have received, oh, wait, that's not the one I want to read. Just the other day, two of our library regulars were taking some time to look at our photo display of our town's veterans. This has been lovingly curated by Vicky, one of our amazing librarians, assistant librarians, who's also a mom of the veterans. And her son's picture is up there with the rest. The regulars talked about the veterans they each knew, and it clearly made them very happy. To reminisce and pay tribute to the local men and women who served in the armed forces. It happened at the library, pictures, etc., um. So I've already started writing a string of them, and, um, why are you laughing?
Sounds more like Paul Barney.
Um, so the my.
No, it's it's not a good idea, I like it, yeah, it makes it personal, I think it's.
Right, exactly, so.
Like the letter that went out, the fundraiser, the annual appeal there was extremely personal.
Yes.
And I think that's why it was so well received.
Yeah, so I.
So elusive. More stories coming in.
Yeah.
Like you're gonna, I think it's.
I already have more story, I already know more story.
But we'll see, you mean, because that patrons will say, oh, yeah, this hat.
Right, exactly, and I'm gonna sit down and talk to, um, all of the assistant librarian staff and and talk to them and say, call me. Something happens, tell me, whatever, and, um, I think I've seen people in communities get excited. When there's this kind of campaign, um, and I think it's a really good way to to grow our audience as well, so. Because people will say, did you see that post about a wheelchair? And we did, and how amazing they are, I mean, that's just the thing we did. I know, but you understand, people are like, they appreciate that stuff, but if they don't know that, they can't appreciate it, right? So there you go, so that's it.
Great, thank you very much, so that's on the docket, um, also, uh, the clink participation. I I created a flyer for that, one put up with a green sort of clink bag color, um, and one.
Yes, I have them in my office, if anyone wants one, we have.
And one white, so that that can be used in social media posting, um, are the staff already, they have them behind the, no. So so when should I pick them up?
Oh, you can put them up, I'll just, as I see everybody, you know.
Okay, I can actually come in and they they're not ready.
I mean, we have, we only have probably now eight left, so, because we only have almost ten, the the box comes with ten altogether, so it's not a lot. I mean, I can get more, but it's, you know, I'll have to find out, so, and the bags are huge.
Yeah, the bags are huge.
They're not small, so, um, but I can, we can put them behind the desk, and I can let everybody know, but maybe even just doing it on. Like the beginning of the year as a, you know, new, let's start.
Okay, so I'll I'll post them around town in Jan- early January, and we'll go from there. And then, uh, you have the the one with just the white background that can be used for social media.
Yep, yeah, very cool.
Yeah, I got, yeah. Um, just a couple other things, I think we need to start brainstorming some ways to pre-recruit if we're gonna do the seasonal swaps. The Christmas one didn't work out too well for a number of reasons, I think it was like a beautiful day, and, uh, maybe a not great time of day. Or the right, right, you know, there are a lot of markets, but but if we want these to work, I think we need to think through. How, who and how, who who to attract, and and target, and and how we're gonna talk about them to to make them interesting.
Um. Jen sent that really good sample email.
Oh, the, yes, I saw that, yeah, yeah. Everything else, uh, we've already talked about, and the next grand committee meeting is, uh, January, so that's it for me. Just as a kind of a.
I have no idea, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we had a nice encounter with a patron. Whose family members donated money a long time ago, like forty years ago, and they had their name on a plaque on a. On one of the bookcases, and he wrote that in his donation to say, hey, my, you know, this is in memory of these two, and there should be, there was a plaque. I don't know if it's still there, it's still there, I took pictures of it and sent it to him, so, um. Just so you know, like, that's that's the kind of thing I'm trying to make sure we see happening, and, um, so, it's kind of fun. I know those names.
Just so you know, like, that's, that's the kind of thing I'm trying to make sure that we see happening, and, um, so, it's kind of funny, I know those names.
Where are they now?
Uh, the plaque is.
No, where are the people that, that reached out?
To remember where they're, where they are now. I'd have to look, and I, I don't honestly remember.
But they're not local, and that's why they were, yeah, asking about it, yeah, cool.
So, I love the marketing thing to one person. This is the only other thing, except Jen, we had, um, we got a request in the mail from Berlin Central School. They wanna know if we would be, um, advertisers for their. Uh, yearbooks. So that is really something that, if anyone wants to look at that, we can put our, an ad in, in their yearbook. Let's see, half page for seventy, uh, half a page is seventy-five dollars. Full quarter page is fifty, and an eighth of the page is twenty-five. So, they need these by. November, or, excuse me, February eighth, so if anyone wants to talk about that, we can talk about it, but I just, it's not something that I was. It's a boring thing, this is for you guys to decide. I was there.
Is it a. Really important as a community building type of thing, I mean, I don't think that, I mean, it can sort of increase recirculation and donations, right?
Just, it's just a matter of getting your name out there for seventy-five dollars, that's not bad. What do you think about it?
If we were going to, like, put a picture of a teen night event. And say something about teen night in our ad. Or if we were going to congratulate the graduates who were participating in teen night, and put their names in our ad, something like that. With, it's like.
Most of the kids who are there, they're, none of them are graduating, it's all the, all the kids who come our, younger, yeah.
I, I don't see it, there's gonna be much bang for, it's not much buck, but it's not gonna be much bang either.
I can see how many people really look at the advertisers in the yearbook.
Yeah, the, the kids don't care, and, and the parents don't.
No, they'll see it like twenty-five years later, when you're getting, you're looking out, you're doing things, and you're like, what was that place we all used to get pizza? And like flip to the appetizers. That's when people look.
Yeah. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Just from an institution standpoint, so, unless you can associate it with sort of a function of the library, of serving the library in. You're essentially contributing to another organization, in terms of. Fundraising, that's not all the sense is.
Mine was me, yeah.
I had to like, it's, yeah, like, something like that, like, said, I'm, like, oh, I find a secret connection, but, yeah.
All good.
Called something for local business.
Yeah, yes.
Now I'm naming a Grinch.
No, you know, you're.
A Grinch, it just makes perfect sense.
And strategic planning is up.
So, anything other that was in the report, I think we're gonna stick with the strategic planning now for now. And, um, and I designed the strategic planning committee as a weird year. It's in there.
Youth Committee, which you didn't have any. You provided a report.
Okay, let's stop being a dead horse there.
I didn't know if I could just not submit a report, so I.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
You, you could ask.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you can just say, I don't have anything, that's fine. Uh, cool, um, and then, uh, recruitment, we, I don't think we had anything unless, does anyone have any?
Oh, yes, oh, um, I have someone who has put their name on the volunteer, wanting to do some volunteer work.
Great.
Um, she's interested in baking, children's activities, holiday stuff, so, um, I will reach out to her, and then. Be, whether she's interested in anything else, I might be.
Should we include her name at this point, or are you gonna wait and talk?
No.
Okay, great. Excellent. No idea.
She's not a Deborah, though.
Do you have any other volunteers, like, do what I used to do as far as?
No, after COVID, it, everything just seems to. Down.
It's a nice gig, you know, couple of nights, couple afternoons a week, helping out with the person. I, I enjoyed it. Then you got me on the board.
It's gone downhill from there.
No, I mean, that might be, you know, people are always looking for volunteer opportunities, especially if they're inside, not that strenuous, kind of, you know. Something.
When we did assemble a list. That we have volunteers who really only reach out occasionally and kind of make it. There are things that we can, we probably just, you should just. Reach out and just say, hey, this is what's going on.
Sounds, I have a lot, I mean, we have this whole list of people who are on here. Um, next time, you know, a volunteer doing something that should be at the top of your library, get a little verdict, and it says, you too.
All the gigs I did, it was probably the most pleasant, I'll put it to you that way.
What was it, did you say you, you were pretty?
You come in the afternoon, and you, you help with the full list, you put books back in the shelves. You basically just try to straighten up the shelves, you go in, and you try to fix the children's section, so it doesn't look like a bomb. It's just, you know, it was only like a couple of hours.
Yeah, that sounds nice, yeah.
It was just, you know, very pleasant, and kind of got me involved with it, and.
Snuck you right in.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, don't tell any of the volunteers that, but I mean, no, it was a, it was a nice way to get to know the library. And people are, are, people are not, they wanna be active, they're just afraid of. You know, volunteering to something that is, you know, either carrying a lot, or food pantry, or all this stuff, it's already strenuous, this is not strenuous. I mean, it's something that, you know, very senior citizen.
It happened at the library.
Actually, I could do a post about. Well, no, that, that makes good people. Richard Swenson. Richard started as a volunteer, now he works for the board, you know, now he's a member of the board.
Well, I think, I think it's a really good way to get people out of their houses. Interacting with other people there, and they can say, well, I'm volunteering at the library, you know, you might meet me there, yada, yada, I mean, it just gets more foot traffic. And it doesn't cost anything. And, I, I, I know a lot of people that want volunteer, uh, opportunities, they're just afraid. You know, for whatever reason, that it's just gonna be something that they're just.
Too much commitment, or.
Little too much commitment, or too strenuous, or, you know, and this is just, it's a very. Just a really nice way to get to know people at the library.
Well, do you think of anybody who might be good?
I.
Send them a roll.
Or maybe we could just describe the role and reach out to the people on the volunteers list, and see if anybody would like to do it, you have, how often did you come, once a week?
Uh, twice a week, Thursdays and Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, help, help Jody, help Vicky. Um, it's just, you know, and it just helps them out, so they can service the customer, like, you're doing, you know, that, and. You know, I didn't like the days that she said you have, you know, the full list is complete, you need to go straighten out the. The, the big books, you know, the, the, the preschool books, but that.
The board books, those are always fun.
Yeah, well, it's all the ones, and you're there, so. It was just, it was kind of fun to come. It was a nice thing. Yeah, I'm gonna spend one on Thursday afternoons, I don't. It's one of my three days, it's the only three day I have.
There's call for public comment.
Okay, call for public comment, oh, there's no one's here.
So we're good there, correspondence, which I. Yep, and then a motion to return. Up next.
Make a motion to return, it's needed.
Make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? It's not, everyone clear, bud?
Alright. Hi.